I call to order the town council regular session at 7:40. The date is Monday, June 27, 2011. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republiq of which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dale, could we have the roll call?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee, here. Councilwoman Eddy, here. Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. First of all, I would like to just apologize for not being at the last meeting. I had a family in from Arizona that I haven't seen in a while, my -- one of my younger brothers. So, moving to approval of the minutes of previous meetings, we have the work sessions May 31 and June 13, 2011.
I move approval of those work session minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. We also have approval of the minutes for the regular session, June 13, 2011.
I move approval.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. And we have the consent agenda, and we have a motion to pull item-
I'll move to pull item consent agenda, item H, off the consent agenda.
And maybe move it, move it to the beginning.
And move it to the first item on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to licenses. Oh, sorry. Yeah, we have to vote on the rest of the consent agenda. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. Ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, Carol. Somebody's on their toes tonight. We have licenses. This is a resolution amending a theater license originally granted on April 11, 2011, to Courthouse Theater Company, doing business as Contemporary Theater Company, P.O., Box 629 Wakefield, to permit performances at various dates and locations as described in the theater company document, entitled Performances and Venues, June to December 2011, subject to safety inspections as necessary. Application by Christopher J. Simpson, President Board of Directors, 145 Enterprise Terrace, Kingston, Rhode Island. Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. Hi, everybody.
Hi. Wow, I haven't seen you in a while.
It's good to see you.
Yeah. You look good.
You do.
Yeah, it's a lot cooler for the summertime, huh?
Girls.
Oh, has it been that long? Wow, yeah, that's been six years.
Do you have a song and a dance for us tonight?
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
Do you have a song and a dance for us tonight?
I can, if necessary. I was hoping to skip that. We can do that if you want.
So, if you would like to briefly describe?
Sure. Essentially, the Courthouse Theater Company, DBA, Contemporary Theater Company, we're a traveling theater group in South Kingston and Narragansett, and we do shows at a variety of venues around town. Our current show is at the South County Commons. Our next show will be at Sagatucket Park across the way here. We'll do some improv or small scenes or classes in coffee shops, in restaurants. We've been at the Towers in Narragansett, the campus at URI, the South Kingston High School. And essentially, the licensing question is just to allow the group to perform under one theater license for the duration of the year and renew every December 1, and pending inspections for every venue from the building inspectors and fire marshal. And that's essentially what the license is for. We already have a license for the space at the South County Commons where we'll be doing the current show and where we did our last one, but we want to make sure that we're licensed for all of the productions going forward.
Sounds good. Do we have questions here at the table? Jim, Jim O'Neil.
Steve, just to make sure we're all on the same page here, it's one fee, and that fee is $100 for the period of June through December 2011.
That's correct. For all of the events that you have listed there, they've provided us with the, with their agenda of events, and that would all be included under that single license that's already been approved by the council. That's why this is an amendment to that existing license.
Okay, thank you.
My understanding is that if there were any changes to the, to that calendar to be made, additions, subtractions, we might not make a big deal about, but additions, we would come before you once again, although I don't foresee that happening. We would amend it again, or we would attempt to at that time.
Kathy, and then Polly.
Did we just get an invite from you?
You absolutely did.
I was gonna say, why don't you, and describe the, there were a lot of different shows compacted into one. I was actually glad you're here because I wanted to-
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked. Thank you. Yeah, the show that we have coming up is called Too Much Light Makes the Baby Go Blind. It's a production of 32-minute plays done in an hour, and it's a large group of some of our most veteran members and actually some of our youngest members. It's sort of an educational kind of project to get some of the high school and college kids who work with us into a, into a pretty exciting show, and they all have a different tone and a different feel, and it happens in an order that is sort of random. Every evening, the audience shouts out the order they want to see it in, kind of like an improv show or something like that, but the pieces are rehearsed, and it's July 8 through 23 at the South County Commons.
Sounds very interesting.
Yeah. Hope to see you there.
Yes, yes.
Polly.
My question was similar, because I was impressed at the schedule of plays you're doing. It's terrific variety.
Thank you.
And just, how many plays are you doing?
So, we do six main stage shows, we call them a year, which is sort of a large production, usually two to four weekends, and we've done, this will be the third one of this year coming up. Then we have one in the Sagatucket Park, which is actually only one weekend because it's an outdoor show. That's in August, the 11th through the 14th, and that play is called Red Herring. It's sort of a Cold War comedy. It's a romantic comedy with sort of spy jokes and stuff. It's very funny. And then at the high school in October, we'll be doing Eurydice, and at the Towers in Narragansett, we'll be doing our holiday show, Mrs. Bob Cratchit's Wild Christmas Binge, which is another one to look forward to, to say the least. And for our holiday shows, if you've been there before, you know we have caroling and, and cookies and hot chocolate and stuff, and that should be a lot of fun. And then we do a lot of other smaller programming as well, improv shows, and we'll do Sunday Fun Day, it's called, every Sunday this summer, and that's sort of improv and also some short scenes and things like that, and that's a free show. We try to keep all of our ticket prices affordable for the community, so we also do some free shows to mix in with that.
Great. And what are your ticket prices?
Ticket prices, so historically, we've, well, moving forward, what we'll be doing, every Thursday and Wednesday show are pay what you can, so it could be a dollar or, you know, significantly more if you feel so inclined. And moving forward, on our Friday night shows are $18, and our Saturday night shows are 22, and Sunday shows are 15, regardless of what the production is, just to sort of make sure everyone has the ability to afford to come see it one way or the other.
Thank you. I was impressed with the variety you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol.
Well, I've been to a few shows, and they're great, so it's money well spent for a good night of entertainment. And I think it's a wise choice to get one license for all of these. Otherwise, you're gonna be in here every month.
Which would be lovely, of course, but I don't, I don't want to take up all of your time. And I also, just to clarify, it's the Courthouse Theater Company, but we're the, that's the legal name, we're the Contemporary Theater Company, is what we operate under, just so everyone knows who you're granting this license to.
And I just want to state kudos to you with your presentation during the downtown Merchants Festival. The children were mesmerized. So, you are a breath of fresh air to the community.
Thank you very much.
Okay, further questions? Jim.
How do you determine the length, beside the outdoor shows, to go with, suppose something bombs, how quickly do you go to a DVD?
You mean when we're running a show?
How do you determine that length?
Usually, that's all usually, like, the number of nights that we'll be performing, you mean? We usually determine that in advance based on what we perceive, or first of all, the logistical concerns of the venue that we're performing at or the time of year, but also some, certain shows that have, you know, well-known names or certain characteristics may be likely to require more showings to fit in a larger audience. So, that is often, that is often a factor, but like, the high school, for example, is a difficult venue to use because there's so many events going on in there, so we'll keep that to two weekends, and it has a large seating capacity anyway, so we'll minimize it that way as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, further questions here at the table?
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. See you at Too Much Light Makes the Baby Go Blind.
Yes.
Longer than some of their shows.
No.
License B is a resolution granting a victualing license to Woodhouse Fire and Cold Pizza, LLC, 402 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval of, by the Rhode Island Department of Health, Rhode Island Division of Taxation, Fire Chief, Communications Superintendent. Application by Paul K., 85 Sheffield Road, Cranston, Rhode Island. This is a new license. So, are you proud?
Good evening. I'm Paul.
Welcome.
Thank you.
If you'd like to tell us a little bit about your new endeavor.
All right. It's, um, it's called Wood Fire, Fire and Cold Pizza. It's made in a wood and coal-fired oven. I don't think there's any of them in Rhode Island as of yet, maybe one or two in New England. And it's all, everything is made to order. We serve gourmet pizzas, calzones, salads, sandwiches, and a few appetizers.
Okay. Do we have questions here at the table? Polly.
And you're located in the former Fish Market?
Yes.
And when will you start?
Um, we're just, um, we're starting, we're starting now to fix up the place. We haven't, we just demoed it, really, taking up the floors and stuff like that, but we figured probably about three weeks we'll open.
Good. Thank you.
Jim, and then Kathy.
Yeah, do you have any other, under this name, any other operations under this name?
No.
All right. All right, I think that's my key question, and we'll stop there. Thank you.
Kathy.
So, is this this particular type of oven that you're gonna be putting in there? Is it a, is that what's gonna take the amount of time, the three weeks to get it open, is, with this coal, wood coal oven?
No, actually, we brought it in last week. It's sitting there now. It's, um, it's only wood and coal. There's no gas to it. There's no hookups to, for gas or anything like that, and it's just really, we're leaving everything as is in the restaurant. It's just that we're gonna do our own decor, and that's what's gonna take the time to open.
Thank you.
Carol.
Have you run this type of pizza parlor before, restaurant?
No, my partner has, though.
And how did it do? How does that restaurant, or did that restaurant do?
Um, he, he works at a couple of them, and they do absolutely phenomenal.
Right.
It's, it's absolutely incredible how they do it.
They're not in Rhode Island?
No, they're in, actually, they're in Florida.
Oh.
It's a sort of a new concept that's catching on everywhere.
And is it a different kind of taste, would you say?
Oh, yes.
Yeah?
It's totally different. It's not, it's not like your average, um, gas oven. It's wood and it's coal, and it's just a totally different taste. It only tastes like two and a half minutes to make a pizza.
Wow.
And it's, it's a great, it's a great concept, a great, the oven comes from Italy, and that's how they make their pizza, in this oven here. So, it's a, it's a total, a totally different concept and taste, and we're excited about it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions? Jim.
Is the wood and the coal in the oven? I see the wood-fired pizzas. I see the wood in there, but the coal and then-
Yeah, yes.
Hard coal, soft coal? What kind of coal?
I don't know. It's some, it's some kind of coal. You could, you could use coal or wood in this oven, and it's either or. Some prefer coal, some prefer wood. That's why we call it fire and coal. Could be wood, fire, or coal. And it's, um, it's just what you feel like using. The only thing you can't use is pine, because you don't want your pizza to taste like pine, but there's a certain kind of coal that you have to use for these ovens, though, and I don't, I really don't know much about it. My partner does, and, but mostly, it's gonna be wood, because it's very, down Florida, they have a lot of, very expensive to use wood down there in these ovens, because they have to ship it in where, over here, it's right around us. So, you could use either or in this oven.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, I see the word coal, I think of scrubbers on huge smoke stacks that use coal for electricity, but-
Nah, nah, nah. This oven, the warranty on the oven doesn't allow certain coals, and it's, it's for food, this coal.
Okay, further questions? Ready to vote?
I move approval of new license B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
License C. This is a resolution granting victualing and holiday sales licenses to Birdsong Gallery, 797 Succotash Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Rhode Island Department of Health, Rhode Island Division of Taxation, Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. Application by Andrew, Andrew Whelan, 125 Kingston Road, Narragansett, Rhode Island.
Hi.
Andrew?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
If you would like to talk about this?
Sure. On Memorial Day, well, Memorial Day weekend, I opened the Birdsong Gallery. It's mostly a gift shopping gallery focusing on bringing in local artisans. We have over 15 artists right now that have paintings, pottery, clothing, three different photographers, some toys for kids, all sorts of stuff, highlighting the creativity of the area, but also with a beach flavor. I sell boogie boards and other sort of beach store, things that might be found at a sort of a normal beach store. And this particular request for the permit is about being able to sell sort of bottled water and small snacks like that. You guys are probably familiar with the fact that the concession stand is not in existence this summer down there, and there really is no place close to the beach for people to go. There are existing restaurants in the area, but no place, it's just a nice service to be able to give somebody a cold bottle of water, and that's more or less what I'm hoping to do.
Great. Questions here? Jim.
Yes, these are already prepackaged snacks, so you're not gonna be making food, cooking food.
That's correct. Everything is prepackaged under the Rhode Island Department of Health regulations. I would require other permits, so everything is prepackaged, nothing made on site. There would be no handling of, of the food itself.
Okay, as I say, not gonna be doing ice cream, things like that?
Nothing like that, no, no.
All right, thank you.
Polly.
Will you be selling things made in Rhode Island particularly? Are you doing shirts and?
Yes, right now, I have a variety of T-shirts, all screened. Everything is made in Rhode Island so far that we have. We have one potter in there that, she has a summer house in Mattoonick and does all of the work there and then brings it back to her house in Massachusetts to fire it, but that's, that's the only out of state so far. I don't know if I'll be able to source things like bottled water in Rhode Island, but that would, I'll probably look for that.
Actually, in Middletown, there is a-
Oh, yeah? Yeah. It'd be good to be able to market that as a Rhode Island-only store, so.
Nice. Further questions?
No, I think it's, I think it's brilliant. I think with the concession stand closing, you know, put the-
Right. And the, the space is very limited. The building is small. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the building. It used to be the Down River Bait and Tackle Shop, and the Wine Riches, and Chapels have had a gift shop in there, and it's very small space, so what I'm able to do is limited by that. At best, I'll have one sort of water cooler and then one sort of shelf system for, for prepackaged food.
Sounds good. Jim.
Lastly, then, you don't have town water there, or do you?
There is town water there, yes.
And how about facilities?
Uh, there, I do not offer any public restrooms, and I don't believe that that's required as for this service, but there, there is a bathroom there, but I don't offer it for public use.
All right, so there is a septic system there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just love that building.
Yeah.
Glad to see that it's occupied. I know it's gone unoccupied and there's been some vandalism down there, so I'm thrilled.
Yeah, it seems like the community is, is very happy that something's going on there, so I hope it works out.
So, further questions? Okay, we're ready to vote?
I move approval of new license C.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Our last license tonight is license D, a resolution granting a miscellaneous peddler's license to Eddie Barbecue, LLC, 55 Spice Bush Trail, Narragansett, Rhode Island. Application by Stephen McLaughlin, 55 Spice Bush Trail, Narragansett. Are you Stephen?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
If you could just talk about, you are Eddie's barbecue?
Yes. That'd be great. It's a mobile food truck. It's not a new concept of doing food. Haven Brothers has been doing it for years in Providence. Just trying to bring it down here, bring something new, doing barbecue, pulled pork, chicken, ribs on occasion, and vegetarian items for those that don't enjoy meat products, and giving it just a different feel around here, and trying to bring something new.
Great. Questions here at the table? Carol.
Where do you plan on moving your truck around? Do you have certain sites where you plan on setting up?
Looking at parking lots and, you know, local businesses to hopefully, you know, if I sit there, bring business to them and bring business to myself. I haven't looked into anything yet as far as where to sit, but, um, because I can't sit on the roads, so, you know, parking lots or where else, wherever else I could find a spot.
Yeah, Michael or Steve, what, I always need to be reminded of our peddler license rules and mobility and-
A peddler is required to continue to move unless hailed to stop, and then to continue moving after the sale has occurred. The town of South Kingston has an ordinance. This gentleman has met with the police chief and been advised of, within the ordinance, I believe there's 20 different locations that are prohibited from sales. Those include many of the other busy intersections, as well as the town beach, or any of the parks without, without approval. But that ordinance has been provided to the gentleman. He's aware of what the requirements are of the town.
Yes, thank you.
Further questions here at the table? Kathy.
Are you gonna be going to Narragansett? Are you doing kind of a circle-type thing? Did you get a peddler's license?
I do have a peddler's license in Narragansett. Still working on places to park there. Kind of trying to find a way, because my electricity runs on a generator, trying to find a way to do that so that I don't have to run a generator, because you can't run a generator and drive a vehicle. So, I'm working on that. That's why I'm limited to where I can go right now, but trying to find a way that I can keep moving so that I can keep moving and service customers while staying within town ordinances.
Further questions here at the table? Do we have motion?
I move approval of license D.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Which brings us to communication, item H. This is a communication dated June 21, 2011, from Geraldine Perry, requesting consideration of an ordinance to regulate domestic fowl on residential property is received and placed on file and referred to the planning board, but we pulled this from the agenda to allow Geraldine to speak. So, if you'd like to come forward, welcome.
Thank you. It's not lost on me that Antoinetta Goodwin used to stand here, so may she always rest in peace. And I know this seems maybe silly to some of you, but we have lived with chickens in our neighborhood for four years. The roosters have been gone now for about a year, perhaps, and I must say, on a half-acre lot, roosters and chickens are just, are just awful. They're loud, they attract small animals, they smell. It's, it's perhaps time South Kingston looks at adjusting their ordinance some. I read the Providence Journal every morning, and on the morning of June 10, I noticed that Barrington, Rhode Island, had passed an ordinance limiting the number of birds that people can have, the location of the coops, and some other requirements about the structures themselves and for the health of the animals, the conditions of the chicken coops and the fenced-in areas that they require. They have an application process, a fee, and a renewal every year. So, I wistfully read that article, and then later on in the week, I was reading the newspaper, the local paper, and I saw that our zoning board was being asked to grant a variance from, what we have is a 40-foot rule from each property boundary, and this variance was being requested so that they could have a structure not 40 feet away, but three feet from their property line. And as someone with very personal experience with these domestic fowl, I was just appalled. For the first time ever, I went to a zoning board meeting and I spoke in opposition to this structure, and the zoning board decided to defer their vote on, on that matter until they could take a closer look at the situation there. So, in the interest of full disclosure, I did contact some of the people who live in Middle Bridge to let them know that I was going to perhaps be sending a letter, and that I've sent a letter to you asking for a look at this. There's a part of me that understands that people want these birds for food. I, I understand that, and I'm not saying let's take chickens out of neighborhoods entirely. I'm just saying maybe we could limit it to like six, which is what Barrington has done, which I think is a reasonable number to get the food that you need for a family. And I would ask that we ban roosters. Other communities have done so because they're a nuisance. There is really no other way to say it, and in any neighborhood at any given time, you know, someone has just come home with a brand-new baby, or someone is recovering from a medical situation, or someone works third shift and they need to rest during the day, and roosters begin crowing sometimes 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, and they literally will crow all day long. At one point where we live, there were two houses side by side, each with coops, chickens, and roosters. It was, it was really, I don't mean to make light of it because it was so unpleasant, but it was unbelievable, and when I spoke to the owner of one set of roosters, there was no reasoning with the person, and so someone had said to me, "Start a petition," and I'm not inclined to do that against a person who lives in their house in our neighborhood. It just doesn't feel right. So, I'm thinking maybe we could look at this in a new way. I mean, maybe we could put some limits in place that would allow people to have food if they need to raise them for food, but to keep them out of front yards, which is where the Middle Bridge coop is going to go, and like, right on the road, which is to me really inappropriate. So, I brought copies of the Barrington ordinance, which I think is quite elegant, and they cover all sorts of aspects, and I'm wondering if our own attorney might have participated in the creation of it. Nice job. It really does cover a lot of, a lot of the aspects that I think that we could benefit from here in South Kingston. So, that's about it. I, I mean, I could go on. You don't want to hear four years of chicken stories, I'm sure of it, but it really is a hope time. And someone that I spoke with said, you know, when you think of the houses down by South County Hospital, and even where we are in Biscuit City, you know, half an acre, you're right on top of one another, so what a neighbor does in their yard directly impacts you, and I would ask that we consider the neighbors in any of the materials that might be prepared to give some relief to people like us. I didn't, I, I like church bells. I'm not putting a steeple in my backyard, so I just would ask that we could consider something. Please.
We have questions here at the table. We'll start with Jim and then Polly.
Mike or Steve, is the 40-foot rule on all zoning districts here in South Kingston? I think, I think Geraldine said 40 feet setback from all, right, front, back, and sides.
That's my understanding. Even on chicken coops?
On chicken coops.
Okay, chicken coop. Okay, and, but all zoning districts? So, that-
Jeff's shaking his head, yes.
You know, 5,000-square-foot lot as well as half-acre. Okay, all right, thank you.
Polly.
Geraldine, I wondered how, I, I hear much more conversation about chickens, and I think people are using them, as you say, for food and eggs, and do you have any idea how much the chicken population has increased?
No.
Yeah, I wonder-
I don't want to know.
Yeah, okay. I would be interested, just because I know there's one in, practically in my backyard that I didn't know about and I heard about, and I don't hear a thing from it, but I'm-
I was awakened this morning at around 4:15 by the chickens in my neighbor's yard. They, they begin to crow or squeak- They begin to crow or squeak or screech or whatever. And, you know, and then the day has begun. So for people like me who are like sleepers at that time of day, it's rather unpleasant. So...
And these are just chickens? It was not roosters?
Well, there were. The roosters are gone now. And the other neighbor tired of the whole thing and got rid of everything. The structure remains, but the birds themselves are gone. So yes, one neighbor still with, although there's another neighbor down the street. He has them as well. So I don't think any of them are 40 feet in compliance. It's my opinion. I hadn't measured anything. It's not my job, but...
Carol?
How many chickens in the, your neighbor, does your neighbor have?
I honestly don't know.
You say more than 20?
No, I don't believe there's more than 20.
10?
Could be.
And Mike, I guess this is a good question for you. Even if we were to, at some point along the way, change, you know, have a more restrictive ordinance, would that affect the people who already have chickens? Would they have to comply with that?
We'd look, if we're going to, if the Planning Board recommends a change to the zoning ordinance along the lines, for instance, of what Barrington does, we would have to look into what those grandfathered or grand chicken rights are. Normally, when you make changes to the zoning ordinance, it's of course prospective. For instance, if you change a zone from commercial to residential, the commercial use stays there as long as it's not abandoned.
Right.
Kathy?
Did you get rid of the roosters in Barrington by chance or just strictly chicken?
No roosters allowed in Barrington.
No roosters in all Barrington?
They're not allowed.
They're not allowed? Oh, in residential.
The question that I have, did this link into any kind of ordinances that Barrington have that we have similar maybe here in South Kingston with noise ordinance? I know that we've talked about barking dogs for 10 minutes. You know, so does that link into anything with...
We didn't link the two, but like South Kingston, most communities do have noise ordinances. And if it's a continuous issue and they're in violation, that, I gotta tell you, that's an extreme, whether it's a barking dog or crowing rooster. That's a very difficult thing to...
That's why I'm linking it.
...deal with with regard to the noise ordinance. Much better to control it through the...
Number.
Numbers and what is or isn't allowed.
It does say that this section, this is the Barrington language, this section shall be subject to the nuisance provision of Section 67-A. I don't know what that nuisance...
The nuisance 10 deals, it does deal with noise and...
Thank you.
It deals with cleanliness and...
Exactly.
Attraction of rodents and that type of thing.
Further questions?
We've got water fowl on some people and domestic fowl and it's...
It's been creeping up periodically. It really has.
And I can sympathize with you, Geraldine, because when the wind blows in the right direction and I could hear those roosters too.
Yeah.
Because Teftil and, as you know, Biscuit City, one of the other items that we were talking about earlier, you know, we are intertwined and I can hear them too.
Yeah.
So I hadn't heard them in a while, so you've answered the question.
Answered that question, sure. But I just, I'm not here in any way to be punitive to anyone. That's not my point. I saw that Barrington had enacted this no-rooster rule and a limit on the animals. And I thought, well, that makes sense. You're not saying, no, absolutely. You're saying, let's be reasonable. And then I happened to see the zoning board listing of items to be discussed. And it just, it seemed like it was time for me to try to get something accomplished at your level because I think this is the only way I'm going to get any relief in any formal fashion. You know, someone could change their mind and go out and get some bird tomorrow, you know. The problem too is in part that people buy them and they're told that they have only hens or chickens or... But sometimes they're not, you know, identified correctly. And then low and behold, you've got yourself a rooster. So I don't know. If I could just ask for some relief from you all.
Carol?
Mike or Steve, with a chicken coop, is that like a shed? I mean, what is the ordinance on, does it even address it at all? I mean setbacks and size and, because don't we do that with sheds?
Here comes Jeff.
Yes, our resident water fowl and...
Section 501.4 of the zoning ordinance requires that there be a 40-foot setback from any building that houses livestock or animals. Now, you know, whether a fenced-in structure is, if you're going to call it a building, it needs a little bit of help. In the case with the structure in Middle Bridge, it was a seven-foot-high chicken wire enclosure that the folks had put corrugated filon or fiberglass top on it to protect it from the sun, protect the birds from the sun, I suppose. So I call that a building. Now, am I stretching the definition? Perhaps. But I stretched it enough so that, you know, they would have to ask relief from the zoning board, so at least it became before a body to decide other than myself. As far as a building goes, it's, you know, is a three-by-three-foot doghouse a building? You know, it's kind of difficult. Roosters certainly are irritating it because they start crowing at the crack of dawn. And the crack of dawn, I don't want to listen to a rooster. You know, I can sympathize with Mrs. Perry, but...
What you're saying is a lot of these aren't really considered structures or buildings because they're fenced in, the coops, the little...
It's very difficult. I mean, if you just have a cage, it's really not considered a building. It's a fence, but...
Right.
You know, it's not just black and white. It's kind of gray. So we try to figure out how we can make what work for whatever purpose at the time. So, you know, that's where it is. Perhaps the Planning Board may be able to help everyone out on that.
I think it's time. We'll go Polly and then Jim?
I think it's time, as we talked about this in the work session, I think it's time we ask the Planning Board to look into it.
Maybe look at Mike's great work from Barrington.
Yes.
Jim?
Yeah, Jeff, before you leave, building permits are not required. Are you saying that? I mean, how about this coop down in Middle Bridge? It looks large. Is a building permit required for that?
Well, depends on whether or not you want to call it an accessory structure.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, so, you know, we've got, we've got four different codes and ordinances and definitions coming into play, so it's...
Okay, and one more time, can you help me out? Is it 40-foot setback from the property line? You mentioned building, but 40 feet from all four sides?
Any property line unless the zoning setback would be in excess of that, which as an accessory structure, I don't think it would be.
All right, so that would be a minimum, 40 feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Address in any proposed changes, the issue of chicken coop being a building or not? Or that could be addressed with new language.
Jeff, are you saying 40 feet from all sides? Back, front, right and left, neighbors?
Yes, any prop...
Even on a shed?
Any property line.
Even on like a shed?
You know, if it's a building that's housing animals.
If it's, oh, if it's a building that's housing animals?
Okay, if it's a storage shed or accessory structure, it depends on a particular zone. In an R-10 zone, the side and rear setback would be six feet. In an R-80 zone, it'd be as much as 20.
Okay.
But if you're going to put the animals in the building, then it increases to 40 feet.
Okay, animals.
Jim?
And Michael or Steve, finally, I thought I remember a zoning case. Maybe Polly was on there. But do we have any grandfathered in industries in this town? Was there a lumbering case up in Brook Farm off Ministerial Road that I thought the courts, I thought the zoning board said it's a historic grandfathered?
I mean, every time zoning ordinance is changed all the time, so it's something...
Okay, well, I just didn't... But I thought in that case, he just started sawing logs in his garage. And I thought the ruling was that it was a grandfathered industry lumbering and the neighbors just, it was too bad.
Yes, I think, I do remember that.
And that was the case, so this is a real question. I just don't know of certain farming. I just need to know if something's grandfathered in beyond our potential control.
Jim, I think you're referring to a guy that decided to make tomato steaks or whatever, or survey your steaks...
That was part of it, but it was...
In his garage and his uncle happened to own a sawmill in Exeter where he was getting the product from or the scraps to manufacture the steaks and whatnot in a residential zone, if I recall.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mike.
Further questions here at the table?
If I could just add, my husband's from Barrington. We spend a lot of holidays and time there. So there are enough similarities between South Kingston and our residential zoning to Barrington to make some comparisons. And I know that we have lots of farmland here, but that's a different conversation in my mind. So I'm willing to help. Only other thing, not to put a zinger in there, but a member of the planning department actually has kept chickens and roosters on Biscuit City Road for a number of years. So I just add that so that there's no bias in the conversation. Thank you.
We appreciate you taking the time to address, you know, this letter, and we appreciate it. So we will refer this to the Planning Board if we can have a motion?
I move that we move this Item H to the, we place it on file and refer it to the Planning Board.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Which brings us back to Communication A. This is a communication received June 9th, 2011, continued from June 13th, 2011, from Councilman James O'Neil, proposing adoption of a resolution to the General Assembly concerning pension reform is received, placed on file in the Town Council. Further directs? So I'm going to ask you, Jim?
If I may, I keep... Do you have a copy, Polly?
Polly needs a copy, yeah.
This keeps morphing into something new and more grand, so I thought somehow or another I might try to make this as simple as possible. The pension issue, I don't think needs any discussion here about the seriousness of this. And the resolution I put forward, the facts, the first whereas facts are quite obvious, but I could eliminate those. What I'd like to keep in this resolution is General Treasurer Ramondo's comments, and I'm just quoting what she said in the paper. "The pension system's challenges are so great that it will be mathematically impossible to fix without dramatic changes that will affect all stakeholders, not just the youngest, but those most recently employed." As you know, I've been saying this for 10 years. My calculator's been true. That needs to be in here. I put a second whereas in there that the Retirement Board has approved a approximately $270 million hit to taxpayers without General Assembly reform for the 2012, 2013 year from approximately $360 million to over $621 million. That's incredible. So what I'd like to put together for a third whereas here is that I would like the Town Council to come together on this. We need to sit down with our five representatives at the General Assembly. And we really need to be on the same page here that this is one serious problem. And if there's no reform, the General Assembly members need to know just what the bill is going to be that we're going to be handed next fall. The recent numbers that I have are almost $5 million for the schools alone without pension reform. Maybe the town side's another million and a half with everything pension and operations. This is just mind-boggling. So I just don't want us to wait till the fall when the General Assembly may get to this. I think our General Assembly members need to talk with us in the month of July. They need to know what we're faced with coming up this fall. And this is just going to be, it's going to fall in our laps and we need to act as one and move forward with this and have them really become engaged with what this 12-member commission that's been appointed by the governor and the treasurer to look into the pension issue. So I'm trying to make this resolution as simple as possible, that we need to get our General Assembly members here, find out where they stand. No matter where they stand, I certainly know where a few do, some others do. But they have to know what cities and towns like South Kingston are facing next year. And when you think about it, we're one of the best managed in the state. So you can imagine that the sum of money that we've got to find, it's overwhelming. So that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to keep a couple of those whereases in there and just be it resolved that we ask the General Assembly, five members of the General Assembly to meet with us in July to let them know just what we're looking at right now. And I think Mr. Alfred, without having to do any hard work here, can put together quite easily a pro forma for them to look at just knowing what our difficulty is going to be in the fall.
Carol?
Jim, which whereas paragraphs are you keeping? I know the second one. You said the first one, no?
Second one, second whereas, Treasurer Ramondo's comments. I'd like to keep Steve Alfred's comment, the fourth whereas. If you read his memo of May 11, 12, he just had the pension numbers alone of $4 million. That came to all the council members, and I know was sent over to the school committee. And then maybe the whereas after that, just simply one that would read that we need to be unanimous as a Town Council to ask our five representatives, center and representatives, to sit down with us in July at the earliest date possible for them to understand what we're going to be looking at this fall. So you need to make that...
And that would be the third whereas?
That could be the third whereas, or that can be it resolved. It can be one or the other. We just need to get everybody on board here. And maybe I should have put another whereas in there because I mentioned it, the $270 million, I know Alan's here, $260, $270 million is a number that the Retirement Board has recommended as an increase. Now, mind you, that's before the General Assembly looks at it. But that's from about $358 million to $621 million. That has been the recommendation for the 12, 13 year. So I'd like to have that in there because that's important. And I'm not going to add any other whereases. But that's important when you realize we're, on an economic basis, the state is recovering. And about $3 billion comes from all the taxpayers in the state. And we're hoping that we get a 3% or 4% business increase of new revenues. 3% to 4% is $90 to $120 million. So this $270 million, it is just simply a mind-boggling number that we all need to be on the same wavelength here, at least to know where everybody stands so we can begin to address this issue specifically with the school committee.
I just heard about five different numbers. I have no idea what number he's talking about. Can we get a little bit more concrete? You're kind of jumping all over the place here for this resolution. My other question is that when I read it today, that there'll be members of this 12-person committee that'll be meeting. But I guess their next meeting isn't really until July 12th, I believe it was? That's what I read in the paper today. So I don't know if meeting any sooner than that is going to help our General Assembly members until they kind of have a game plan set in place. I don't have a problem meeting with the General Assembly members. I just, it's going to be within a timeframe that they have some idea of what is happening with this 12-member group.
Well, that probably won't happen, Kathy, until the fall. That's quite obvious. What we do know is what the Retirement Board numbers are. It's $270 million more that's been in every newspaper headline, staggering. Town manager's stunned.
Just rattling off five different numbers there. So I'm just trying to get a grasp. I've got notes all over, 270, 315. I'm just trying to get it clarified.
Kathy, I only mentioned the $270 million number, the 351 to 621. That's the number you got to grasp here. And that's what the Retirement Board has recommended with all the investment changes, going from eight and a quarter, seven and a half, so on and so forth. going from eight and a quarter, seven and a half, so on and so forth. That's what the Retirement Board has recommended. But the Retirement Board is advisory on this to the General Assembly. The General Assembly determines what's going to happen. And that's why we're not going to know till October and November, and that'll be much too late. We need to know from our General Assembly members that they are going to be on top of this and that they are going to know just what we're looking at as a town council for budgetary needs next fall. And also too, I mean, when you think about it, October and November, I mean, basically, frankly, Steve, as well as the school committee, we're well into our budget development by that time. So we need to get on this early, very early.
Polly?
I think it would be great to meet with them, and I think it's important that they realize how seriously we take this and how desperate we think the situation is. I think they probably know, but I think that it would do them some good to hear it directly, to meet with us and hear it directly from us. So I think it's a good idea. I don't think you need more whereases. I think.
I was just going to keep them at those minimum.
Just keep them limited and say, let's meet, and we want to tell you how we feel about this.
Right.
Because we're doing our budget. That's my feeling.
Carol.
I think there's no doubt we all agree that pensions need to be reformed, and it's going to be a big problem for the state and for all the communities. I do want to ask you, Steve, as to, one, two, three, the fourth whereas, are you comfortable being quoted on that number, the 4 million?
That was his memo of May, right?
It says 4 million.
To all the council members.
I just wanted to ask him.
Oh, okay. No, I'm sorry, okay.
The memo I put out.
Right.
Was at 3.9 and change. So, I mean, the statement adequately reflects the gist of that memorandum.
Good.
I would note that that number three that you have there, Jim, the state budget deficit for 2012 is forecast at 300 million. Obviously, that's not the case at this point since the redevelopment of the budget was put in.
Right. And I took out the first whereas. I said, I was taking that out. I was starting right off with Gina Ramondo's comments, which was quoted in the paper.
Okay, so you're going to take out that first one?
Yep, the whole first whereas, want to make this as simple as possible.
So we're going to make whereas number two, number one, and then?
Yep.
Then skip to four.
And four is going to be two. And then what's going to, and then we're going right into the be it resolved?
What I wanted to do was add what the Retirement Board has just voted on and approved unanimously up there was approximately $270 million. I get the exact number, it's 269 million, but $270 million recommendation for the increase pre-General Assembly reform. Remember, they're only advisory. So I wanted that to be the third whereas, and then the fourth, be it resolved, that we look for the earliest meeting possible with the General Assembly in July, just so they know what we are faced with.
Jim, do you think that it's better in the form of a letter, seeing that there's only four whereases, actually three, and then be it resolved? Do you think it's better addressed in the form of a letter to our General Assembly?
I guess I was hoping that this could be sent to other councils around the state, because we're all in this boat together. And it's really important that this be, we need answers before a budget development in the fall. I mean, and that's why I wanted to leave Ramondo's comments in there. This is running away from us mathematically. I don't think anyone can doubt that. So I'd like this to go to other councils in the state to show that we all need to work with our reps, no matter what side of the equation they're on. We just need to know. We just need to know, and they need to know, because it falls in our lap, the $5 billion, not theirs, ours. And so that's why, anyway, I'm just trying to make this as simple as possible and send it out. So I'd rather have a resolution rather than a letter.
For the comments?
I think it's reasonable with the changes he made.
Are there any comments, additional comments, maybe from Steve or Alan?
Are you asking to have a meeting in July with the legislators?
Well, as soon as possible. I mean, if we could do this.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, I'm trying to understand what items we're keeping in and which ones we're not. You're going to add a resolu, a whereas that the council's requesting a meeting with the legislators?
That would be the end. That would be it resolved, that the council requests a meeting with, that would be the finale, and be it resolved that the council requests a meeting.
And what other whereas is?
Three whereas's. Ramondo, your memo, and the $270 million General Assembly, excuse me, the Retirement Board recommendation.
He added that on to the sixth whereas.
So I've got three whereas's now and a be it resolved. Ramondo, Alfred, the 270 million, then the be it resolved that we meet, that we request a meeting with the General Assembly.
That's from his Retirement Board.
He just changed it.
I added that. That was a new whereas. Took out six whereas's, threw that one in.
Why don't you give us word for word what you want that to say, Jim? Maybe that would help.
Whereas the State Retirement Board has recommended an increase of pension contributions from the taxpayers of approximately $270 million. No, no, it's not there.
No, it's not there.
Yep, it's a new whereas. I saw you looking up and down the paper. No, it was not, it was not there. Polly knew where I hit it, but it was not there.
It is right there, right there.
If one of you has one, you can. Let's have it.
Okay, yep, yep.
Jim, just qualification. The number that you're talking about at the 260, I'm trying to reconcile that number with information that I have on the MERS system. On the MERS system, what Alan and I have got would show an increase of contribution in the 13-year over the 12-year. Teachers was 82.5 million, MERS was 26.9 million, for a total of 109,500,000. I think that the increase that you're talking about would be the increase required on the private pension plans as well that are municipal, particularly cities of Cranston, Wallack, and.
The Retirement Board was only looking at teachers and state workers. Judges are in there too, but a very small piece.
And what I'm saying to you is, this is the MERS system itself.
Yes.
And so you want to add on to that, you want this number along with what the state increase itself would be?
I'm just happy with the state, but I can use both.
All right. I just want to make sure I got it right.
So what's the state number, Steve? 109, is that what you said?
MERS.
Well, the MERS system is 109,500,000.
Right, but the state is.
The state has to be, yeah, so the state would be up 150.
Okay.
To get to your number.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And that's how we get the 260, 270 million, yeah. Thank you.
So you just want specifically the state, or you want the state and the MERS?
State and MERS. Thank you.
Broken up separately and then give the total. That's what I would do, to make it clearer.
I think so.
Well, I'm not doing it, Polly. You can, you can get it from, it's up to him.
We can do it separately.
So what the state is adding plus MERS, which comes to 269?
269,5.
Five.
269,5.
And that's a million.
Million. Thank you.
And is July too soon, or should we go to the meeting in August?
They can.
So does it can. I mean, I'm sure it'll go into August, but.
That's why I say this will never get done in July, never.
We have one meeting in August, August 15th, and, no, we want them at a different, right, separate meeting.
But I was thinking, since they'll probably be through with the General Assembly session over the next week, then they'll finally have some time.
Okay.
I think they're going to wait until after they have that meeting, at least by July 12th and probably subsequent meetings, before you're going to have them even try to come forward, because it's not that they have the answers, they're going to be listening to what this 12-board to try to give more information to the public. That's what I was trying to say before, before, you know. And I will not be here the end of August, so.
And the week before that 15th, I'm going to be away too. The August 8th. Any other vacation?
The 20th, that week, 23rd, I'll be away.
So if we make note of that.
Yeah, I'm going to be away in the end of August, too.
All right.
Well, I guess it'll be as soon as practicable. How about that?
Yeah, we can certainly give Steve, we can give Steve or Dale our schedules and see what we can put together with the General Assembly members. I'm sure it'll be like meeting with URI, but we could probably.
Yeah.
But the point is to start now, because you know they're going to delay, but the thing is to start now.
So any further comments here?
Steve has a few, maybe it will have, from Alan.
Dale, while Stephen Allen's doing that, did you want to make some notes that Kathy won't be here, what Cath, August 22nd, that week?
That, whatever, that Monday, I don't have a calendar.
Yeah, I have it right here. August 22nd.
22nd, 23rd, 24th, yeah, that week.
And Paul, is it the last right here, the 29th?
Um, let me look there.
I'm probably going to be away the week of the 8th. Going to get Jim and Carol to take a vacation.
I'm just going to be away.
I will be here. This is so important. I will find a way to be here, and whenever.
I will just be away now, but Jim won't let me stay for the whole week. I'm going to be away the 24th through the 30th.
24th through the 30th for Polly. Through the 30th for Polly. Just so we don't, Jim, just so we don't, you know, book something and don't have a full council here, that's all I was referencing. Okay.
All right. Want me to move the resolution?
I think Stephen Allen are.
So if that enough meeting, putting now and then, those days are up. So it's pretty much a whole month of August.
Well, that week that we have that, August 8th, August 15th meeting, and the beginning of August.
July's good, we're all here in July.
We're all here in July.
First two.
We're meeting August 15th, right?
First and third.
Yes.
Weeks of August seem to work. First and third. Yes. Finalizing numbers here.
I'm still trying to reconcile numbers, because the 621 that Jim's referencing, I've got from a treasurer's report that showed state employees at 246.5 million, teachers at 375.3 for 621.
Right.
Now, that doesn't include the MERS system.
Well, that's what I thought. That's why I said that was state workers and teachers. I thought the MERS was added to that. So I need your help then on that. I thought it was in addition to.
If you give me the ability just to write that sentence.
Thank you, okay.
That'd be great. All right, so that's the Retirement Board's approved, the 270, is that what they're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So Steve's going to finalize those numbers. So we have.
He's, Jim, you're going to give her the whereas's, right?
You're going to give her the new whereas? State Retirement Board has recommended an increase from the taxpayers of, and Steve's going to put that number in and break it down.
It's haven't still been calculated, Dale, so that's what he's working on.
Dale, I will give you those three afterwards. Steve's working on the correct number.
Steve's going to finalize that, and it's going to be all separated, okay? Kathy, good with that?
Steve's numbers and Alan's numbers.
And the last, be it resolved, that we meet with.
Be it resolved, that we meet with, yes.
As soon as convenient, or what was Carol's word?
Practicable?
Practicable. I'm sure it's such a word.
Isn't it?
I'm not sure that is a word.
I don't know. Practical, I know.
Practical, I know too. I don't know, practical. I like that.
Practically makes an adjective.
Like that new word.
So are we moving on this? I would say someone needs to make a motion, and we need a second, and we'll take a vote.
Well, Jim, are you going to make the motion?
So the motion has to be clearly.
I make a motion that we approve with the amended whereas's and be it resolved, the resolution on pensions.
Last second.
I'd just like to say, with the changes in the number that Steve's going to make, is that right, Jim, regarding the Retirement Board's recent recommendation or determination?
And the MERS amount.
And the MERS amount.
Okay. Dale, are you good? Or do you want me to further clarify?
I have a question. For, for, for.
Oh, I will help you.
I can further clarify if you want.
Senator, I want to, you've got a great, four is to meet with the legislative.
That's a be it resolved, that's the, yep.
Okay.
Meet with our legislators, our legislators.
And the third resolution will be a total and then broken down into each category. So we're good? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 500. Which brings us to Communication B. This is a communication received June 9th, 2011, continued from June 13th, 2011, from Councilman James O'Neal, proposing adoption of a resolution to the school committee concerning school reconfiguration options is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. Jim?
All right, this one I can, I've done quite a bit of savage work here, removing most whereas's. Originally, the resolution was, again, to echo my support for the elementary school model, the heart of the schools, Wakefield and Peacedale. But that's got to take a second position to what we are slowly learning here about budgets coming up next fall. So frankly, what I'd like to do with this resolution is basically two whereas's. One, again, one whereas, referring to Steve Alfred's May 12 pension memo to the council.
What number is that originally, Jim?
That's not in there, so that's a new whereas. And my second whereas is I would request that Mr. Alfred, I'm not trying to put a burden of work on him, but I request that Mr. Alfred put together a pro forma, particularly on the school budget for the 2012-213 year. And then I'll go right to be it resolved. I want to meet with the school committee ASAP, because we're looking at, no matter how I add it up, I've talked with Steve, I've talked to John Ruschet, we're looking at $5 million for schools alone without pension reform. And so what we need to do is meet with the school committee. School committee needs to see these numbers. We need to look at all scenarios. One, if there is some pension reform, if the taxpayers would agree to a 4% increase in the levy next year, which may not happen, but we need to give the school committee that range. And they're probably going to come down to a situation where they need to find $2 or $3 million, which is going to be structural changes. There are going to be some major changes in the delivery of education next year. So again, I just want to get that, get at this early and have the school committee come up with a number of scenarios, given a pro forma. That's Steve. I really want the schools to come up with a pro forma, but I think, I don't think a whole lot of work needs to be done here. I think we know what the pro forma is going to read, and I think we need to see some options and see some boundaries from the school committee.
Okay, I'm just going to see, because I'm not going to bore him anything tonight until we have the concrete. He wants a where, a number one whereas that he has.
I turn my mic off. He wants a number one whereas about Steve Alfred that hasn't been written yet, so that's to be determined. Then he wants a pro forma for 2012, 2013 that hasn't been written, and then meet ASAP. Then he wants a pro forma for 2012, 2013 that hasn't been written, and then meet ASAP with the School Committee and a $2 to $3 million structural... Until I have something concretely written, I'm not gonna pass anything, that's, there's nothing here. He's, he's voided this, so he, to rewrite it, if you want Mr. Alfred to do that, and he has the time, and maybe you could meet with this, the superintendent to do a pro forma, or get a pro forma from the School Committee, how can we pass a resolution when there's nothing here?
I think I just changed it, Kathy, so I am asking...
I'm not gonna vote on that.
Kathy, why don't you go home? This is so important, Kathy.
Excuse me.
Five million dollars, I just changed the whereas's.
We all will stop now. All right. Please wait to be addressed by the chair, and we will be respectful. Polly or Carol, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, I, I think, what are you talking about with the pro forma budget? For the, for the next year, you want it now? Or are you talking about all the different configurations that the Reconfiguration Committee came up with? That you want to see cost savings, or you want to see... I'm not sure what you're asking for in the pro forma. I think when I looked at the, the different options that the Reconfiguration Committee looked at, I would like to see what kind of budgetary, what kind of numbers we're talking about, and what kind of savings we'd realize by doing any one of those. Instead of just, you know, obviously it has to have an educational component that works for the town, and education is so very important to all of us, and, you know, to this entire town of South Kingstown, but we also have to look at, how do we keep the programs, keep the good, the excellent education system that we have, while cutting back on budgetary costs for the School Department? So I guess what I'm saying is, I'd like to see what the numbers are, and the advantages or disadvantages, educational-wise, to each one of the different options that was played out, at least the ones that the School Committee is thinking about. You know, I'm sure there's plenty of them that they've decided not to consider, and to those that are left, that they do want to consider, I would say, we need to see what the dollars and cents are, and the educational pros and cons associated with them, although I do think that they put some of that in their, in their reports, so... But not as far as the money was concerned, they didn't.
Polly, let me jump to Polly first.
Yeah, I, I think it's terribly important. I think our job in this is to encourage the School Committee to get a pro forma budget, and I think the budget should not be written by Steve Alfred, I think it should be written by John Rashat and Kristin Stringfellow, and I think with his help, and I'm sure Steve would be extremely helpful, but I think the School Committee needs to be encouraged to look at their budget, the pro forma budget, and to make some really hard choices. And I don't think we need to look at some of the other details that have been flying around, but I think it's our job to encourage them to do that, so I'd like to... I think the Town Council should say to the School Committee, you know, this is what your job is, this is what you were elected to do. Please get on with it, because things just look more and more desperate as we go on. The state education fund, formula, the, everything we see is making the school problem more and more difficult. So I would like to see the council encourage the School Committee to get to work with this information of the pro forma budget.
And Jim, I'm just gonna reiterate before I, you know, pass the mic to you. I, too, would like to see a pro forma, and encourage the School Committee, you know, to, to create the pro forma with, you know, reaching out to Stephen Alfred, because I do think that where we're heading on this train is going to affect the town altogether, and I think putting everybody's head together, not that it's a Town Council decision, it is a School Committee decision, but I think that we can be of value with the assets that we have, with the knowledge that Alan and Steve have, and looking at the quality of education, and no matter what, what corner, you know, the School Committee takes, it is gonna affect the whole town. So I think at some point, maybe a meeting in August, with a follow-up meeting in October, to put a lot of this on the table for discussion, you know, to work together with the School Committee, because they have a very, very difficult task at hand, and I think also including, you know, our senators and representatives at that table. We're all elected officials here, and I think we need to, at this point, join hands together and use all the valuable resources that we have to face this big hole that we're, we're looking at. So, I think we're all in agreement. Kath? It really was Jim, but I am gonna defer to you, Kath.
I have no problem with the pro forma being done by the superintendent of the schools, because that is her job to do. This resolution from the beginning was just scrapped, he had, I just want to clarify, that he wanted a whereas by, by Steve, then he wanted a pro forma by Steve. It's not Steve's job to do all that. That's why I'm like, this has to be completely scrapped. If we ask for a pro forma from the, from the superintendent for the 2012, 2013, if she could even, probably even see in her crystal ball, even far enough out to look at 2014, 2013, 2014, I think that that is serious numbers that needs to be looked at. I think that everybody in this town should be aware of those numbers, if we can even look at 2014, 2015, which might be very, very hazy, but I think this whole town, every single parent, taxpayer, needs to know what we're up against. And other people don't realize that we also have a tax cap in place that goes to 4%, because people have been talking to me about this issue, when I bring up a tax cap, we are all well aware of it, because we live and eat and breathe this, other people aren't. So when you, you can't, and we try not to even go near that, we try to keep it as close to 1% as we possibly can, we're gonna have to probably, it could be a possibility, hit that 4% and over. We can't do that, it can't be done, and the school can't get all 4% because the municipality's gonna need some of it, and again, we don't even want to go to 4%. So, yeah, things are very, very bad, and people need a huge, huge, huge reality check about what's going on out there. And the School Committee, I believe, is aware of it, I think that they try their best to try to get, to let the public see it, but it's, it's time for them to be the leaders that they were voted to do, and make the right decision, and it's time for the superintendent to get the real data out there to the people, and so everybody can see what I've been sitting here seeing, and what the rest of this Town Council has been seeing, and no option should be taken off the table, because it's not gonna, no option, everything is in play. Every single thing is in play, everything. That's all I had to say.
I just want to ask you one question, Jim. Did you, did you truly mean that you wanted Steve to do that pro forma for the School Department, or...
No, I, I thought I, I rambled on to correct it to John Rashat to do that. You know, there are no secrets here. John Rashat, I sat next to him at the Recon Committee, he has the numbers, Steve has the numbers. We don't need to go into detail here. We need to meet as soon as possible, and we need a couple of scenarios from the School Department. One scenario is, if we're lucky to get 4%, which I stated earlier this evening. Another scenario is, maybe get a million dollars back from the General Assembly with pension reform. Give us a couple scenarios, nothing's off the table, we might have to close two schools. Nothing's off the table, but we need to see these options, so come October, November, December, there'll be no surprises, we'll be ready to act, because we'll know by that time what kind of pension reform's coming at us. I gave you all the numbers earlier, and we have got to meet with the School Committee sooner than later to ask them, here are three or four different scenarios. Steve would obviously just oversee and see if we were off the trail for the numericals in the budget, but basically, we need to get this going now.
Kath? All right, so looking at 11:12, the 13 whereas's that we have in front of us, and the be it resolved. Jim, would you come back, or do you want us to go through these one at a time, or if those, before the end of the meeting? Do you, would you have those three?
Well, why don't I just go right to the resolution, say, be it resolved, we need to meet with the School Committee in the month of July.
I like it.
Period. And they better be available, not four of them, all seven of them, because this is gonna fall in our lap, because they're gonna let it fall into our lap.
We need to be, tone, just tone it down a little bit.
Well, I don't like what's happening here.
All right.
What about the General Assembly, you want them, do we want to meet with them also?
Oh, of course.
I think that they...
At this, for this purpose?
I think that they need to be at the table.
Certainly be welcome, certainly be welcome, but that's, you know...
I would say it'd be nice to have them all here in July, since we all seem to be here in July, but I don't think that you, we don't, I don't know anybody's schedule, but it is a big vacation month, I just want to throw that out there.
Again, could we say as soon as practical?
Practical, thank you, Polly.
Practical, I think it's a word.
Sure. How, how do...
So I, I, I move that we place this on file.
Well, are we replacing it with a new resolution, period? South Kingstown Town Council to the South Kingstown School Committee, be it resolved, we need to meet with you as soon as practical, July would be preferable.
Here in General Assembly?
Shortest resolution I ever wrote.
All right.
Love it. No wonder I'm behind. What about the pro forma part, you don't, you want to...
Toss it, toss it. Everything has changed.
Changed.
Everything has changed.
Fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Just asking for a meeting.
Dale, what's your question?
In the month of July, or as soon as, as they're available. Okay, that's fine.
Also with the representatives and senators.
Yep.
With our General Assembly, right, legislators as well.
At the same meeting.
Right. Okay, I think Polly made that motion. Did you?
Yes.
Yes, and I, I seconded it.
Jim seconded it.
So we have a motion and a second. Steve?
Let me clarify, I do not want to prepare a pro forma.
You're not.
I certainly would like to work, no, no, Emmy, I certainly, Alan and I would work with them. If you're going to have the meeting, I would suggest that you need some type of base data to be able to begin that meeting, or at least that there be discussions on it, because if not, you're gonna be talking in circles. So I think that what you need to do, if you're gonna ask for the meeting, is also ask for a preliminary pro forma that would be prepared through the schools. Alan and I would offer our services as far as any assistance we could provide, but it should be prepared through the School Department itself, and hopefully could be resident for discussion at whatever meeting you have with the School Committee. I suggest you do, do it that way, either that, or we're gonna go off on tangents that I don't think are gonna be productive for you.
It's a good point. It's a good point. So we're gonna...
So we're gonna add the...
Add that verbiage.
Would you like me to withdraw my motion?
Unless amendment is made, and... All right, withdraw, that would be great.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Jim, is that okay? And we'll restart over here?
And we'll start over.
And Jim's good with that? So Polly? Or Jim, do you want to state the two, whereas, and then be it resolved?
Okay. It doesn't really have to be in that form, does it? I just, a, a resolution requesting the School Committee be with the Town Council in the month of July, along with the General Assembly matters to discuss, and, and request them prior to the meeting to develop our preliminary pro, pro forma budget for the fiscal year 2012-13.
Perfect, sounds good.
For discussion purposes.
But I'm not counting on the General Assembly for that, this is School Committee Council. I've got, General Assembly members want to come, but I don't want it to make it look like, if nobody from the General Assembly can come to this, we're not gonna have the meeting.
Okay, I'll just say it, and we will request the General Assembly to, to be present.
And I think July, was your point that July was pushing it, you couldn't get a pro forma? Kristin and, and John Rashat would have difficulty doing a pro forma budget by July?
If they're looking just at the 13, 12-13 year, I don't think that there's a lot of detail that you're gonna be able to provide this early, so I think you can look at that. I think that as refinement goes forward with a pro forma, you're gonna want to look at a multi-year pro forma based on what it would be going out several years. But for the basic, this, what, what needs to be started is to, is to look at what the worst-case scenario is that could be projected for the 12-13 year.
12-13.
With the worst-case scenario, then you'd be able to look at, how do you adjust downward if impact pension reform provides some type of relief? If, in fact, there's a replacement of the federal aid that may be lost next year, or is it going to be lost, or is it gonna be put back in by the General Assembly? That type of basic information, I think, can be had reasonably, reasonably quickly. If you're looking out for 14 or 15 year, that's gonna take, take a good deal of time, but if you're at least looking at what the worst-case scenario is, then I think you start the discussion on, how do we provide a balanced budget with the limitations that are in place? And that way, both the council, School Committee, and the public have an opportunity to say, well, have you considered this? Or, and that way, cost estimates can be put on all of the various options, similar to what the Pension Committee's being asked to do, is to look at every available option, not to say that they're good options, but what's the value? What's the cost factor associated with it? So that if you are looking at a $3 million need for expenditure reductions, that there's, everybody's ideas are out there, the costing for those ideas are out there, and then the School Committee, who's really the final and ultimate authority, provides a prioritization. And yes, that really does need to be accomplished in advance of December, when the Charter calls for the joint meeting of the Council and School Committee. So I think a summer meeting, whether it's in July or whether it's August, but I also caution, the contract negotiations will also influence any of those performers. Contract negotiations are, at this point, a standstill, because they're going to mediation and potentially arbitration. So there's a great deal of information that you're not gonna get specific data on, but you need to look at what worst-case scenarios would be, and then how you would work within that worst-case situation. And also, I think, as Kathy said, to provide the public with a realistic expectation as to what is the funding availability going to be in the 12-13 year. So I think if you ask for at least the preliminary pro forma, which, as I say, John, John and Kristin and I can sit down with Alan, and the four of us can come up with what we see as a worst-case scenario, and at least be able to have that as an opening discussion for that, that joint meeting. And it will be difficult to get any meeting set up in July, where you're going to be looking for both five council and, and, and seven School Committee, but we can attempt to do that. I think the other thing I'd suggest that you do is, rather than a resolution, have Dale prepare it as a, as a, as a letter to the School Committee requesting them to schedule an appointment with us, and to look at the worst-case scenario. I think that would go a lot further than making it appear as if the council's demanding their presence at a meeting.
So what Dale read would be just right? What Dale...
Yeah.
It should be a letter.
It should be a letter, yeah.
Okay.
So we withdrew?
So we need a second motion here.
To send a letter?
Yep, it's gonna get us to the end that we requested.
Or place it on file?
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to place Communication B on file.
Second.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, instead of voting on the resolution, Communication B, we're going to send a letter to the School Committee regarding a potential, a meeting that we'd like to have in July or August, or as soon as we can get everyone together, and also have a preliminary pro forma budget presented before that. forma budget presented before that meeting, especially with the worst-case scenario and the different options that we could possibly be entertaining for the next fiscal year.
I'm not sure you're going to get the options at that meeting, I think that you need to just explore what the financial conditions are going to be, if it shows up that you're at that, I think that at that meeting you would come up with suggestions that would then need to be costed out, but not, you're not going to get the costing done in advance of that meeting.
It just seems like the natural progression of a meeting like that, that we're going to be asking, okay, this is the worst-case scenario, how can we save money, and what will we save with this option, that option?
I think it comes down to the same thing the school committee has been forced to do over the last several years, is the development of a matrix, and with the matrix, the identification of the costs associated with each of the factors. Then, an identification by the school committee in their prioritization of, if you need to get to this number, these ten items would be done, if you only need to get to a lesser number, the first five would be the ones to be done.
Right.
But I think that the subject matter of your meeting with the school committee would be trying to identify both from the school committee level, school staff level, what the council or the public would like to see as additional items that could be considered if in fact, major reductions were going to be necessary in the funding availability.
Okay. So Polly, are you good with that amendment, replacing this with the letter?
Paul? Yeah, I thought Dale's was fine.
Right, Dale's verbiage was great.
Yeah, I just put that in letter form.
Yeah, put that in a letter form.
Okay.
I'll move that.
So, let me just clarify, the motion is to replace this with the letter, with all the information, with the verbiage that Dale has used. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, further discussion?
Here.
Jim?
Yeah, I will vote for that, but I really believe it should be a resolution, I believe it should be a demand issue with the school committee, that's how important this is.
Right, and the way that I look at it is, I think that the, the main function here was to get the meeting, so I think we're still getting to the means for this, for this end, so I'm, I'm glad that we at least compromised to come, to get to this resolution, I mean, this Communications Item B. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five, zero, zero. Which brings us to Communication E. A resolution adopted May twenty-fourth, two thousand eleven by the West Warwick School Committee in support of Senate Bill two thousand eleven, Senate zero, zero, seven, one, an Act relating to education that would extend the notification requirements regarding the dismissal, suspension, or layoff of teachers from March first to June first, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs?
We discussed this at the works, work session, and we decided to place it on file and forward a, forward it to the school committee to seek their recommendation, and I believe we just didn't have enough information on this matter.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five, zero, zero. Which brings us to Communication I. This is a communication dated June twenty-first, two thousand eleven, from Joseph Iacoy, Executive Director, South Kingstown Chamber of Commerce, requesting a property tax exemption for fiscal year two, twelve, two thousand thirteen, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs?
We also discussed this at the work session, and I believe we would like Mr. Iacoy, the Executive Director of the Chamber, to come to meet with us in November, so that we can discuss and decide on this issue in advance of March fifteenth. So-
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, ready to vote, further discussion?
Excuse me, may I ask, was it as early as November we wanted him to come? It was, thank you.
I thought, I thought we discussed it in November. Yep, it was November. Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five, zero, zero. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. If anybody would like to speak, if this is, open the mic to the public. Welcome.
Hi, do you recognize me?
Yes.
Jonathan Daly-Labelle. Been here before a couple times. Actually, you know, I'm going to be pretty quick, so I'm just going to say that my second child is graduating our Curtis Corner tomorrow morning, she's had a great couple of years there, there's going to be two Daly-Labelles at the high school in September, and it, it's just been, it's phenomenal. It is, this is a great community, it's a great town, it's a great school system, and I mean, I guess that's why I, I keep coming, because I think it's worth being involved and, and trying to have a say. So, just working off of the, the resolutions that were here as part of the, the agenda, I'm not sure if the whereas for the, and you'll need to look it up, but for the pension one, you know, I, I guess what I'm, what I saw tonight is kind of a lot of working together, you know, trying to, to build some consensus, trying to find solutions, but kind of realizing that everybody needs to get, try and get on the same page. And, you know, so the, just the whereas that I picked up on was unanimous town, town council offering support for our senator and representatives, you know, should encourage and enable them to look at the pension math, you know, and so I, I think, I'm very encouraged to hear the discussion of just trying to get everybody to work together, look at the issues, look at potential solutions. This is painful, I think most people do realize that it's painful, but maybe it's not as painful if everybody says, hey, this is what I can do. You know, you look at all the different stakeholders, you know, across the spectrum, if everybody can kind of weigh in and say, well, this is what I can do, this is what I can give up, this is what I can contribute, and the only way that that's going to happen is if you have, you know, good dialogues, you know, from our elected officials. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? I just want to make note of a few activities in our community. Kudos to the Downtown Merchants, it was a wonderful festival, I believe it was last Saturday. There's also a chamber activity, which is the golf ball drop, that's at the thirty-third Annual Balloon Festival, it's July twenty-fourth at one-thirty, Chamber is sponsoring a golf ball drop, and the tickets are five dollars each, and they're on sale for, in many locations throughout the town. So, be looking for that, there are prizes of fifteen hundred dollars, a five hundred dollar winners, and then nineteen holes of Chamber-sponsored gifts. Just want to brag about the South Kingstown High School graduation, and I think there's three people in the room that had children participate, it was a pleasure to sit there and watch, absolutely phenomenal. And we also had two retirements in the school district, Nancy Nettick, actually, it's not a retirement, Nancy Nettick and Michelle Little, and two wonderful activities for both of them to acknowledge their dedication in years of service to the children of South Kingstown, it was two wonderful events. And the last one is just, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I did want to acknowledge, I'm not sure if it got done, but on, I think it was June third, there was the bridging ceremony for the Girl Scouts, and it was a privilege to have six girls receive their gold award, and I believe there's two others coming forward, so it was Rachel Adronowitz and Lizzie Bizanet, Rachel Gavella, Catherine Lovosi, Tess McNamara, and Erin Moss, and I believe a few of those were from Narragansett. So, kudos to the Girl Scouts, and it is truly a wonderful community that we live in. With that, does anyone here at the table have any comments from interested citizens? Jim?
A couple of things, Jonathan brought up the schools, and, which have had lots of great decades, especially in the sports arena, and only because I love my old tennis career, but some things have got to be talked about, and Andy Carr's success with the high school tennis team, his thirteen straight titles is something, we've got great athletic teams, I mean volleyball boys this year, finals at the state, but thirteen consecutive years, and what's most incredible, I used to play tennis with Andy and his father, but what's most incredible is we didn't have the number one finalists in the state for singles, but what he had was an incredible team and incredible effort, and congratulations to that high school tennis team and all our athletic teams, but thirteen straight years, that's, that's quite an accomplishment. And the second thing I wanted to ask, again, you know, I guess I wish I had our General Assembly members here, but just, and I only got these articles out of the newspaper, but with the budget that was released by the House Finance Committee last week, gosh, it looks like the South County Hospital has received another devastating blow, and quite honestly, I don't understand net payments, and maybe Alan and Steve will have to tell me what it's all about, but South County Hospital looks to have to come up with a million, four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, which is right off the bottom line, or as Lou Jancola, President of the Hospital, said, that's equivalent of twenty nurses. But what a devastating blow, we don't hear from our General Assembly reps, I just don't know what was in front of these committees, but you know, they have got the highest average pay employee, they're an incredible economic engine to this community, and do you guys know about this? I don't know about this, I don't know it's on the General Assembly plate, but I certainly hope somehow or another, we need to find out from our General Assembly members what has happened here, not only to South County Hospital, but Westerly, but we need to see what we can do. I know Senate Finance, I think, has got to make a decision on the budget this week, but if these numbers are true, this is just a terrible blow to frankly, one of our great economic engines here in South Kingstown, so I wish we had some way to find out what this means, what we can do, and what we can do as a team here with the General Assembly members, but I just really hate being out in the cold for something so important like this.
I, I'd like to make those phone calls, I think that, looking at the hit that South County Hospital is going to take, as well as we all should call our representatives and senators.
Thank you.
Any further comments here? Any further comments up in the audience? We'll move to Town Manager's Report.
Couple of items, in the June sixteenth Managers' Report, I released the final memorandum on certification of the two thousand eleven, two thousand and twelve property tax levy program. As noted in that memorandum, the tax rate for the tax bills that will be sent out during the first week of July will be at a rate of fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Since we go four places after the decimal, it's fourteen point five, one, two, three is the exact rate that's used. Based on the council's actions to increase the motor vehicle exemption to three thousand dollars, we're levying of the total property tax levy of sixty-six million, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, approximately three point one million dollars will be coming out of motor vehicles. That's down from about four point two million dollars in the, in the current year when the exemption was at five hundred dollars. So obviously, this allowed us to increase the, the rate requirements on the real estate to the fourteen fifty-one. Had we stayed at the five hundred, it would have been at about fourteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. The overall levy, as set by the council, is up less than one percent, or six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, and the average single-family structure with two motor vehicles will see an average property tax rate levy increase of approximately eighty-eight dollars. Second item I wanted to report is that, as of June twenty-seventh, the United Water Company, in conjunction with the Town of South Kingstown, on behalf of the South Shore and Middle Bridge Water Systems, and the Town of Narragansett, based on the public water system in Narragansett, have issued a joint press release indicating that in anticipation of the heavy demand for water services during the summer months, that we will be instituting for the three water service providers, a outdoor water restriction effective as of June twenty-seventh for an uneven, so persons living at addresses with an odd numbered address will water on that odd day, even days for those persons with an even number. This is to ensure that there's sufficient water supply to meet customer needs, as well as fire protection within the water service area. One note that I would also make on this water restriction, water use restriction, is that this does not include those customers of the Kingston Water District. Kingston Water District has not agreed to institute the odd even water restriction, as has South Kingstown, Narragansett, and United. I would note that the water systems have, for the past few years, worked together so that there would be uniformity with any type of outdoor water use restrictions, so that there's clarity for the, for the general neighborhoods as to when there's, they can properly use the water for outdoor water purposes. That is posted on the town's website, and anybody with questions can refer those questions to the Utilities Division in Public Safety, Public Services Department. Another item that I'd like to report on is that a member of the council had requested a status report this evening on Mattoonik Shoreline Protection and where we stood with it. The council awarded the contractor, St. Gene Engineering, at the last council meeting. Since that time, we have engaged St. Gene, he has engaged the surveyor that's necessary to provide the survey work in advance of the engineering design. We expect that the survey work will be completed by the week of July eighth, and we also expect that by the end of the month, or approximately August first, we will have a preliminary design completed for the wall structure. The town, in conjunction with the engineer, has also scheduled a meeting on June twenty-ninth with CRMC, because we want to make sure that we're working with them rather than presenting plans that are at a ninety percent design stage. So at this point, we're continuing to move forward on, on those efforts. We also are, right now, working with State Department of Transportation based on a grant proposal in the amount of one point six billion dollars that would be provided to assist in paying for the construction of the seawall. We are at a second edit on the, the grant award, and hopefully we'll have something before the council, either at the next meeting or the second meeting in July. So we're continuing to move forward, obviously the progress is slow, but it's going to be slow until we can get the survey work completed and the preliminary engine, engineering design in consultation with, with Coastal. We're still hopeful that during the month of August, we'll be able to report better progress at that time. That concludes the items I need to report on this evening, with that, I'll yield to the solicitor if there's no questions from the council.
Any questions here at the table? Thanks for doing that work, Steve. Town Solicitors, report?
Nothing unless there are questions.
Any questions here at the table? Okay, which brings us to appointments.
I move that we appoint Stephen M. Clark to the Building Code Board of Appeals/Minimum Housing Board of Appeals. Dale, do you have the term, how many years he would serve?
No, I don't, Carol. It's usually on this memo.
Probably three years, it looks- Probably three years, it looks like. Almost everything is. I'm guessing.
Is that, I thought that might have been on one of our five-year terms, but I can't remember.
I don't know.
Steve said he thinks they're five years.
Yeah, yeah, I believe it is.
How about if we move on to the next one?
All right.
We can come back.
That's fine.
Okay. That's good.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in, sorry, Jim.
I want to thank Mr. Clark, because this is not an easy job, and it's rather sporadic, but very important when it's, he's called on. So I really thank him for staying with this.
Right, we have one vacancy that, anything that we can do to try to get that filled? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero.
Next, I move that we reappoint John J. Biafor to the Recreation Commission. His term expired in June of this year, and he would continue on until June of two thousand and fourteen.
Do we want to do Mark?
And, oh, do them together?
Sure.
Okay. And also, I would like to move that we reappoint Mark R. Noble to the Recreation Commission. His term expired this month, and he would continue to serve for three years until June of two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I just would like to thank both of them for the time and service that they've given to our community. So further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero.
Next, I would like to reappoint, I'd like to move that we reappoint Anne E. Heffron to the Waterfront Advisory Commission. Her term would continue on for three years, which would last till June two thousand and thirteen, seeing as she expired, her term expired in June of two thousand and ten. Is that correct, Dale? Is that how that would work?
Of course, I know, yes.
Okay. And I'd also like to reappoint Glenn R. Windhurst to the Waterfront Advisory Commission. His term expired this month, and he would continue on for three years until June of two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero.
Further, I would like to move that we appoint James E. Bedell to the Waterfront Advisory Commission for a term of three years, which would take him to June of two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This candidate is so well-qualified. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Okay, that was quite a bit of appointments, which brings us to new business. This is new business item A. This is a resolution accepting for town ownership and maintenance, the roads and associated infrastructure within the Kingston Woods subdivision identified as the Zeller Circle. Julia Court and Mountain Laurel Drive has described in the warranty deed from S L N, LTD, to the Town of South Kingston. Said deed shall be recorded in the land evidence records of the town. In support of this action, the developer has filed a maintenance bond in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, which shall remain in effect for a period of one year from the date of completion and acceptance of work. This date shall be interpreted to be the same date as the town council accepts, acceptance of the streets. Steve?
You've got the recommendation from the planning board, as provided in Mr. Vin Terry's memorandum. Planning board's satisfied with the completion of the construction work.
I move approval then of a new business item A.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to new business item E. This is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to W W Granger Incorporated, seventy-eight Jefferson Boulevard Walk, Rhode Island, M S C Industrial Supply Company, seventy-five Maxxus Road, Melville, New York, and Fastenal Company, two thousand and one Thriller Boulevard, Winona, Minnesota, for industrial equipment and supplies based on the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement, three forty-eight for the period ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, and is further described in a memorandum from the Financial Controller to the Town Manager dated June twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Bid Recommendation: Industrial Equipment and Supplies. Steve?
Recommendation is to use the Master Price Agreement, which is really the same action we've taken. I believe Granger's been with us for the last sixteen years on these type of material purchases.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New business item F. A resolution authorizing an award of contract to Atlantic Control Systems Incorporated, P O Box three thirteen, Exeter, Rhode Island, for municipal subcontractor excavating services at the unit prices bid for the three-year period from July first, two thousand and eleven through June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June seventeenth, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Bid Recommendation: Annual Municipal Excavation Subcontractor Services.
Recommendation is for the sole bidder on the, the services. We did ask eleven vendors to submit proposals. We received one. Atlantic Controls were with us for the last several years. The average value of this contract is about, between twenty-two and forty thousand dollars a year, and it's only used on those cases where the depth of the pipe installation is such that we can't manage it with the size of equipment that the town owns.
I move approval of new business item F.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New business item G. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to T. Mayozi Incorporated, seventy-five Airport Road, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the Liberty Lane Phase Two Road Reconstruction Project in amount not to exceed four hundred and fifteen thousand, including a contingency, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June twentieth, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Bid Recommendation: Liberty Lane Phase Two Road Reconstruction Project.
We received five bids on this, this road construction, which calls for the reconstruction of that portion, thirty-four hundred feet of the, of the road between Route Two and thirty-four hundred feet to the, to the north. The low bid is Mayozi. We've also included a contingency here. We recommend that you award the, the bid as provided in John's memorandum.
Motion to approve new business item G.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New business item H. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to Borden and Remington Corporation, P O Box two five seven three, Fall River, Massachusetts, for sodium hypochlorite at the unit bid price of sixty-six point one four cents per gallon for fiscal year two thousand, two thousand, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June seventeenth, and entitled Bid Recommendation: Sodium Hypochlorite.
Five companies bid on this product. Borden and Remington is the lowest bidder for the, for providing that chemical.
Motion to approve new business item H. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New business item I. A resolution authorizing the Town Manager, Manager to execute individual payment in lieu of tax agreements for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve with the South Kingston Land Trust, Welcome House of South County, and the Jewish Children's Home of Rhode Island, which is Camp Jury, in accordance with the Town Code, Chapter Seventeen Taxation, Article Four, Property Tax Exemptions and Payment in Lieu of Tax Agreements for Charitable Organizations, Section Seventeen dash forty-five, authorization into affirm the guidelines described in memorandum from the Town Manager to the Town Council dated June twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Pilot Programs Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Eleven, Two Thousand and Twelve.
The memorandum that I provided to the council under the date of June twenty-second documents the actions that have occurred since two thousand and three, when the council first adopted the pilot program for these three entities. The council also, at that time, adopted guiding principles. Those guiding principles were that all properties held or managed for nonprofit organizations that were used for the organizational mission would be tax exempt. If they were used for other than nonprofit purposes, they would be taxed as, as a, any taxable valued property in town. The provisions also indicated that any type of residential use would not be available for any type of tax abatement within the program. The land trust provides tax exemption for all of their properties that are held in open space. However, the center that they, they own, they pay fifty percent of the cost of the value of the land that the land trust building sits on, as well as fifty percent of the value of the, the building itself. The Camp Jury owned seventy-three acres, which used to be the Cod's Camp property. That property was purchased with Champlin Foundation and Camp Jury back in nineteen ninety-nine. Since two thousand and three, Camp Jury has had an agreement where they pay for the residential structure, the value of the residential structure, as well as a building lot for that residential structure, and at approximately thirty-seven hundred dollars assessment value per acre on the seventy-three acres that they, they own. In addition to that, two years ago, the Camp Jury began leasing a portion of their property during the non-camp season, the, which coincided with the school year, to the Middle Bridge School. Middle Bridge School pays rent. As such, under the guiding principles, they're required to provide subsidy to the town through the, through a pilot agreement. The pilot agreement is negotiated on a yearly basis on the same basis. That is, to look at what the value of the lease is at a capitalized rate, and then to calculate what the taxes would be on that value of property. Approximately seventeen thousand dollars will be coming through to Camp Jury. Welcome House, all of the, the Welcome House Center, as well as the administrative offices, are tax exempt in accordance with the guiding principles. The properties, the multiple properties that Welcome House owns that are year-round rental properties, they pay twenty-five percent of what the tax value is associated with those properties, since they are used for for low-income temporary housing situations. That is the three agreements that are before you this evening. I would recommend approval as presented.
I move approval.
I move approval of new business item I.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New business item J. A resolution authorizing the abatement of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand thirty-three cents in uncollectible real estate, tangible and motor vehicle taxes, as further described in a memorandum from the Finance Director to the Town Manager dated June twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Abatement of Uncollectible Taxes.
I've provided you with a memorandum from the Finance Director that recommends that the council authorize abatement of uncollectible taxes in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Also noted in that memorandum is that our collection rate for the year two thousand, which is the year, taxes will be abated after a ten-year period of collection. At the net tax levy for that two thousand year was thirty-eight million seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. With the abatements that will take place tonight, the Finance Department and the Collector's Office specifically will be collecting ninety-nine point nine six percent of that levy. Several of the properties of note for abatements is within the twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Thirty-one hundred and forty-one dollars is associated with the real estate accounts where private roads had been considered as lots and had been assessed against homeowner associations, where those have been taken off the tax roll after the last revaluation. We need to clean the roll between the years nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and nine. There are also several bankruptcies for tangible properties that we won't be able to collect. Those seven accounts for the tax years of two thousand and six through two thousand and nine amounted to about two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. The remainder is principally motor vehicle taxes from the two thousand year, in that amount of twelve thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. As I said in the work session before this meeting, I'm very proud of the work that the Finance Department and the Tax Collection Office does. Our collection rates continue to exceed ninety-nine point five percent when we look at our net levies, and I think that they go to extraordinary steps to be able to collect those taxes, to ensure that the following year's taxes are as less as they can be, and still meet what the mission of our organization is. So again, Alan's with us tonight. I do want to thank him for the work that his office has been able to provide in dealing with tax collection.
I move approval of new business item J, with congratulations to Alan.
One comment, I think it's a team effort, because obviously.
And his team.
Because a lot of work has been done, and that's what, like, doing that to be able to keep talking back to each other, so much.
Our hats off to you and the staff for the superior effort.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. The next is new business K. This is a resolution that program balances identified below in the two thousand and ten-eleven fiscal year appointments for General Fund One Oh One shall be transferred to the following reserve funds in corresponding not-to-exceed amounts. And this is presented on the web in part of our packet, so I'm not going to read it. But if we could have a motion, oh, actually, Steve?
All right. I would say that the next several resolutions that we're dealing with are dealing with the closeout of the financial year, which ends on June thirtieth. The item that you have on the table at this point is the transfer from operating departments to reserve funds. What we're looking at is three separate fund transfers. The first is a transfer of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars into the Public Works Improvement Fund. Public Works Improvement Fund is the capital reserve that's used for road construction activities. Dollars that were under expended within the three departments, the contingency, Streets and Highway Department of the capital budget would be transferred in. One of the reasons for the transfer is that we anticipate spending approximately seventy-five thousand dollars on an unbudgeted item, which is the reconstruction of the Dougway Bridge, and we would use these transferred dollars, sixty-five thousand from the contingency, for that specific purpose. And the Streets and Highway dollars and capital budget will provide the dollars necessary to continue with the road construction in accordance with the capital improvement program, which goes forward on a yearly basis with council approval. The second is a transfer of ten thousand dollars out of the Town Hall Improvement Fund. We budget money in the operating budget on an annual basis for town hall improvements. If, if there's emergency work that needs to be done, it's spent through that account. No, that type of work wasn't necessary this year, so what we want to do is to continue to hold that money so that it can be used for major projects around the town hall, whether it includes roof repainting of various components of the building. But we'll have those dollars available. Right now, there's about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars that'll be available in that account to be able to meet needs of this building as we go forward with that ten thousand dollar transfer. The third item is a transfer of two hundred and seven thousand to the Compensated Absences Fund. Compensated Abs- Compensated absences provides for the direct payout for those persons that retire or leave employment with the town that have accrued vacation sick leave, holiday pay that they're entitled to payments at time of separation. At the current time, the liability for the general fund stands at about $1.9 million, $1.941 million as of June 30th, 2010. That'll be updated again as of June 30th, 2011. We have, with the transfers that would occur here, we would have revenues of approximately 1.238. So we'd have funding of approximately 65% of what that total is. Obviously, you're never going to see everybody leave on the same day, but this is a means of providing that so that it does not have direct impact on your operating budget if you have long-term employees leave that have accrual balances that would require multiple dollars, particularly in the police department with some of the retirements that we're seeing in the 40 to 60,000 range, based on the payouts that are necessary. We don't want that in the operating budget. We would like to have that go through here. We'll pay it through the operating budget if there's dollars available, but this fund would be the funding source of last resort for retirements as we go forward. I recommend that the council award each of the transfers that are listed. Also, within the memorandum that Alan has provided, we talk about what the status of the fund balance will be. We're estimating at this point that we'll close the fiscal year with these transfers occurring with a surplus position of around $870,000. It means that our undesignated fund balance as of the close of June 30th, 2011, will be projected at around $8,956,000. I think that we'll probably see better collection over the 60-day period for property tax collections in July and August, which are resident to the 2010-2011 year, so that number may be a bit understated at this point. The percentage of the fund balance to the general fund for the 11-12 year will exceed 12%. This is also something that will go along with the next item, which deals with establishing a policy relative to the value of fund balance. So I'd ask the council to approve the resolution as presented on the agenda under item K.
I move approval of item K.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. New business item L, a resolution adopting all enterprise and special revenue funds as presented in the 2011-2012 final Town Council Budget, approved April 25th, 2011 in accordance with the South Kingstown Town Code, Chapter 6 Finance, Article 1 in General Section 6-1, Financial Management and Procedures. And again, this is all listed on the web, so I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Yeah. In accordance with the town's financial management ordinances, we are requesting this resolution that provides the Finance Director with direct financial responsibility for budget administration on each of our enterprise or special revenue funds. I'd request council approval as presented, which is also in accordance with the adopted budget of the council, which was approved in April.
I move approval of new business item L. Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. New business item M, a resolution adopting the chart of accounts and stated appropriations for the 2011-2012 fiscal year relative to the administration of the municipal budget program and the major program functions and funding levels, in accordance with the South Kingstown Town Code, Chapter 6 Finance, Article 1 in General Section 6-1, Financial Management and Procedures, as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here, too.
Again, part of our financial management ordinance requirements are that we refine the budget that was adopted in April to provide for authorization for the managers to be able to move dollars within each of the major categories. Any money that would be moved out of each of the major categories into another would require Town Council approval. So this is really just a redefinition of the budget that was adopted by the council in May, but provides the budgetary authority to the manager to be able to manage those accounts, as well as to report back to the council if transfers are necessary from one major program function to another.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve new business item N.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. New business item N, a resolution authorizing a fee of $35 per hour for use of police vehicles for private police details, and amending the town's schedule of fees, as further described in a memorandum from the Finance Director to the Town Manager dated June 22nd, 2001, and entitled Proposed Increased Vehicle Usage Fees.
Recommendation is to increase the hourly rate charged to third-party vendors that are using the services of the police department for private details from $25 to $35. As noted in the memorandum prepared by the Finance Director, we're estimating that we'll increase our revenue source by about $26,000 if that action is taken, with about $2,600 being used per year. If we get it up to $3,400, which is a potential, based on what the last three years have been, looking at the averages, it would generate about $34,000.
I move approval of new business item N. Second.
Alan.
Yes. Just to let you know, we're all looking at, based on the concern of the budget and...
Alan, you need to use that mic.
Based on the budget concerns we heard tonight, we're starting to look at all the non-property tax revenues to make sure that the service that we're providing, you know, we're charging an appropriate cost, because some of them haven't been updated for a while. So we're looking at public services. We're looking at public works. We'll be looking at the town clerk fees to see if they're realistic. You know, obviously comparing them to other communities to make sure we're competitive as far as what their rates are. We don't want to be too high. We don't want to be too low. So that's something, this one was, you know, very easy to put that forward. There'll be others that will be coming forward, hopefully, over the next couple of months.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. New business item O, a resolution implementing Governmental Accounting and Financial Standards Board, which is known as GASBIE, Statement Number 54, by adopting a fund balance policy, committing the ending fund balances of all special revenue funds for specific purposes, and delegating authority to the Town Manager for assigning ending fund balances. And again, I'm going to refer back to what's in our agenda here and what's on the web.
Do you want to ask Alan to present on this item?
As I outlined in the memo that the council has received, you know, just as we get used to the classifications and categories of fund balance, they end up changing them. This is a requirement. It's based on GASBIE, which is the highest authority as far as issuing accounting standards. So there's five new descriptions. Won't spend a lot of time on them, but non-spendable, that would be anything that's in a trust fund, an endowment that can't be spent, that's restricted by the endowment. The restricted fund balance, that would be like a federal or state grant, where there's certain conditions how that money has to be spent. The third category is committed. That's something that the Town Council, as far as when they adopt a budget, they have the option to commit that fund balance. They also have the ability to assign it to the Town Manager. And that's my recommendation, that all the special revenue funds, capital projects, that authority be delegated to the Town Manager, and then obviously, he'll reflect those numbers in his budget, whether it's the budget or the capital budget. That means it'll be less that we have to come back to the council on and change. You know, if we had a road project and it was in the capital budget for $500,000, and it only came in at 500, or if it came in at 525,000, we would have to come back to you on that 25,000. So it just, it streamlines it, and I think it's something that we should do. The unassigned fund balance is just basically what is the undesignated fund balance now in the general fund. So that's, after you take and pay all your bills, that's what's left over at the end of the day. And the only account that will have that is the general fund. So all special revenues and capital projects going forward will either be committed or assigned fund balance. There's some definitions at GASBIE 54 that are outlined in the memo. And then, GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association, recommends a range as far as a fund balance, or actually, they have a minimum fund balance policy that they recommend, and that's two months. We've talked about that. We haven't had anything formally in the past, but it's always been 10% to 15%. So based on two months, that ends up being 16.67%. So what I've done on the policy is to build in a range. Obviously, during the economic times that we're in, to maintain a 16% fund balance, very difficult to do. So the range is from 10% to 16.67%. Right now, we're at, what was that number, Steve? 12?
12.2.
Yeah, just over 12%, the way we expect that we're going to finish the 2011 year. And then in addition to that, you just have to have a policy that's required by GASBIE 54, how you'll spend those funds. So it starts at the highest tier, the restricted, the committed, the assigned, and then the unassigned. And that's pretty much it. It's effective for the June 30, 2011 audit, so obviously, tonight would be the night that we need to adopt this. If there's any questions, I can certainly answer anything, I hope.
Alan, can you address the two reserves that will be transferred back into general?
Okay. Yeah, good point. The crux of this, in addition to coming up with the five new categories, is that GASBIE thinks there's too many special revenue funds out there, which we do have quite a few. So if the primary revenue source is tax dollars, it cannot be recognized as special revenue fund. So consequently, we have two funds that have basically come from property tax transfers. That would be the affordable housing, which we have $10,000 in a reserve fund for. That would now be a committed fund balance on the general fund side. In addition to that, there's money in the municipal planning reserve fund that we've transferred over the years when there's been surplus in the planning account. That money also will come into the general fund as a committed fund balance. It will then have to be budgeted. As that money's spent, it'll have to be budgeted out of the general fund versus coming out of the special revenue fund. And then in addition to that, the compensated absences, which has been a special revenue fund in the past, will become an internal service fund, because there's multiple funds contributing to that fund. That's pretty much the changes we'll see. That'll have to be done retroactive to the 2010 audit. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Alan.
I move approval of new business item O.
Alan finds this exciting.
I applaud the efforts, and I hope other communities take this as a model.
It was brutal.
Unbelievable.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And again, for the tireless effort and the work that you've put into this, both you, Steve, and Alan, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. And before we adjourn, I just want to thank the council for getting through some difficult discussions tonight. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.